Yes, sir, if you look on your, in your packet, it's not, it's in the, it was in the, included in the initial packet that you had, and then there was an initial, another page added. These would be, again, changes and amendments and line items of general purpose. Yes, sir. It was in your. Well, the last page, the newest budget amendment that came out after the one that I sent you, gentlemen, it has an additional page, but the one, you had a budget amendment attached or included in your initial packet. And in that initial packet, the first, the heading of the first page is changes and amendments and line items of general purpose, special education program. And what that is, is there was Melinda Parker, Special Ed Coordinator, when she had her budget approved, it was approved at a rate higher than what John had budgeted initially for. So that's why the, the request is to increase from the fund balance at $6,500. And then, I don't know if you have to decide on each one individually?
No.
Okay. Then the student body, again, there was, and these are going back to when, when the budget was proposed, these budgets were, were set by John Pidkin, just a few, looking at the track for the previous few years. And the girls soccer, that is, for that 4292 coming out of fund balances to cover girls soccer at the junior high, which is a new program and is providing school board funds to support that, that sport. And then the other charges of, well, $3,500 goes to girls soccer, and then there's a cost of, or charge of 792. That portion is to pay out to a, a person to provide sponsoring of junior high cheerleaders. Heather Jenkins left the junior high and she was the cheerleading sponsor. So the replacement for her was somebody that's not in our current staff. It's actually her daughter, Peyton, who's gonna be working with her practicing them. And then Debbie Jones, who is on the junior high staff, is gonna be there at the ball games to supervise and provide administration. And then for the regular instruction support, again, this was just, it was a situation where we were short in supervisory category for like career ladder. And it's just moving some funds around from different sorts to justify the career ladder expense of $1,000 plus, based on the recommendation from Sherri Pidkin. The computer personnel, that was to, to afford Dustin Carroll a raise, needed raise. Second page, as you see there, in the fund balance of $30,000, that's to offset the costs that we have had for workers' comp insurance. That was the, the last bill that we received, and again, that was not budgeted. We had a, from an end, end loss perspective, we had a higher than normal occurrence of workers' comp situations, which warranted that, that bill from them. So that's the reason for that change. Transportation, it is just a movement of funds. Again, the bus drivers' fund, we had to pull out for special ed bus drivers, it had to be in separate line item. So you'll see that the movement from just the general 72, 710, 146 bus drivers' account is just moved to the special ed bus drivers. That's the only adjustment there. Early childhood education, again, this was one of those situations where it was underbudgeted. And Linda Patterson had a budget approved, which was a, needed to increase that by $1,601. And so the adjustment was made, and out of the fund balance would be 624. The rest of it is just movement of money, and as Ann said, for the pre-cases, that program has to match to the penny. So that's why you've got in here the, all the details of where that money has to go. Third page, the IDEA Part B carryover budget. Again, we had cash on hand of 580182, plus the total carryover includes that 13592847. So it was, again, adjusted to those areas to accommodate teachers, and you see all the subsequent costs that are included. But that's just to, again, that's cash on hand and carryover from previous budget. So since that's already been approved in the previous budget, there's no other action other than yours necessary. At the bottom, the IDEA preschool, again, this is carryover that was added to the budget. You have to account for all those money, dollars taken. And the last page, on the first part, the last page is Perkins Funds, Vocational Funds. Again, Jill Faulkner had a budget that was approved, it was $1,010 greater than what was initially budgeted. So that's where, again, it's just a movement of money to those locations. Again, you have to designate where that dollar has to go, even down to where you have to count for the, even the cents, it has to be matched to the penny. Okay, there was a, and a couple more, or actually three more line items added to, I mean, budget amendments added to, that was in your, you had in your orange packet, and then there's, Sarah, there's actually a duplicate, I was not sure if she provided that, if those copies were made. Let me just share with you this first one, and this is gonna be good news to share with our staff. The additional budget amendments, general purpose, the regular instruction, Chester County receives equity funds from the state, which means for small school districts that are not at the average salary for teachers across the state, they give funds each, well, they haven't done it in a while, but they have reenacted it, and our allotment is, where you see the revenue, 134587. Because of our now TIF, Teacher Incentive Fund, where we have teachers choosing to opt in or opt out, this, these, these funds, this 134587 came after teachers made that decision to opt in or opt out. So Sherri and I and John, in our conversations, decided that this money needs to go to all teachers, not just those who tipped in. Subsequent years, if the money comes back, and this is supposed to be recurring money. However, John said it's political. Political money, as far as the assurance is gonna be there every year, it can go away. And a few years ago, he talked about how that equity money left when that BEP 2.0 came into existence. So each year, we will recalculate this, and it is a allotment of approximately $600 that will go to each, but again, this is full-time teachers, certified teachers, and supports them, as far as librarians, counselors, supervisors, principals. So they'll get that check sometime in that neighborhood, and then the non-certified, your classified staff get their longevity checks and their bonuses. So it'll be sometime before Christmas break. And then finally, at the bottom, it's a, this was, again, with Heather Griffin, with her coordinated school health, she was wanting to secure the services of a dietitian for $1,000, so she's asking to move $1,000 out of travel in her own budget to go to pay for that contracted service. Now those are all budget amendments.
Make a motion, approve them. I don't know if we need to do it, this is what it's over. Motion to second to approve the amendments and budget, we have a discussion. All in favor, say aye. They both approve. Okay, then, I think saying it's gonna be delegations, if any delegations that want to address the board.
Hey, guys, thank y'all very much. First of all, I'm going to speak briefly, wanna commend the student council of the high school. They've done what's been asked of them, and they listen to the voice of the students. They have gone through the proper change of command, they wrote a document that talked about dress code. We submitted that document to Mr. Catlett, and then we submitted it to Ms. Gilzer. Since Ms. Lacy Holdem is the person that created the document, I'm just gonna let you guys ask her any questions or anything that you wanna ask her.
Good evening.
In that same letter, gentlemen, was put in your package, so you guys.
You know, I, I think I really need to thank by it because we spent months coming up with the dress code. And the only thing, it makes me a little gun shy either way. And I'm not saying we don't need to change it, but if you make adjustments one place, then next month, we got somebody else wanting to change it again. And so, and then, and then when you say logos, yeah. You know, and I stopped by the Dixie Outfitters store while I was out this weekend, which is a logo that says Dixie Outfitters, it has a Confederate flag on it. So.
Okay. Well, I understand what you mean about the, the recurring adjustments, and students, not any student, well, I guess they can try, but I doubt that any student could just walk in here and ask for changes. Like Mr. McPeak said, they have to go through that proper change of command. The student council, we have a record of everything that we've asked, of every, every dollar we've spent, everything, we keep it all on a file, and so we will know what we're asking for, how often we've asked for things, and, and we believe that we'll be able to find a balance.
But you wouldn't believe how many parents have come in and asked to change it for various reasons.
Right.
Well, if, if I could, we've already changed it on the outer layers.
Yeah.
And all we're asking is for that same thing to be on the inner layer. That's, that's basically all we're asking, is the same rule that you have on the outer, because the rule is, the outer can, as long as it's covered by a business card, it's okay. We're not asking you to do anything you haven't done already, except on the inner layer. That's, that's basically all we're asking.
You said you don't want the logo to be visible?
Well, it's, we just want the same rule that you've got on the pullovers, on the, it's the same rule. There's been some confusion in what's, in what they've asked for, it's basically, we, it's been addressed that it has to be the eagle only on the pullover. Yet, on the zip ups, on the, everything that's covered, you've made the revision that as long as it's covered by a business card, it's acceptable. Am I correct on that, right?
Well, you have, you have the dress code policy.
The, the dress code policy now says if there is a, if you come in with a fleece or a pullover, as long as the logo's covered by a business card, it's acceptable. What we're asking is that that just be carried on over to the pullover.
For any layer, not just.
That way they can wear the, the, the same thing that they're wearing on their pullovers and fleeces, that it is acceptable, which we do fleece as teachers, that, that's just allowed to carry over to the undergarment. So that the Nike, the Underarmors, those other brands, as long as they're solid color, will, will be allowed.
But will that logo be covered up?
No, it's not covered up on, on the amendments that are on the, now, it's not covered up on the fleeces or, or gar, outer garments.
The only, my only feeling on it would be is if we were to say, okay, we're gonna go with this, we would still be, in my opinion, that, you know, if something is deemed, something that causes a problem or be offensive, then all the principal have to do is say, you know, that's something that's gonna be called, we afraid could disrupt the school or class. And then, you know, we could say, okay, we're not gonna do that. But, you know, I think they need to kinda look into this before we make any changes or we're doing any fabric.
Basically, all of, what I think we wanted to say was, you already allow it right now in the, the outerwear. It's already, you can have the North Face, you can have the kids come in with their Nike, as long as it's appropriate and it's winter time. And you'd be surprised how many come in right now with 94 degrees with a pullover, because they say the classes are cold. We allow the, those tight garments in the classroom right now. All we're asking is that be carried over to the, to the, to the actual pullovers, which will still be solid color, but basically, we're saying we're not going to just single up and say you have to go to American Eagle. We're saying if you've got a Nike, an Under Armour, and, and her being fashion fleece can tell you that.
Those are fellows I already have in my closet.
The, 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 American Eagle stuff's actually kind of expensive compared, if you go look at some of the, the other brands. And that has been the question that students have brought up. We can go get, I can wear my Nike, Under Armour, solid blue or black, and I can get those at outlets for, you know, eight or nine bucks. Just looking at, asking what you do for the outer garments, just put it on the, the pullovers as well.
And the issue becomes, I'm already wearing these same brands. I have a Nike pullover, that is a gray Nike pullover, and it has the Nike symbol in the corner, can be covered up by a business card. I can wear that, but I can't wear the green Nike pullover that matches. I mean, you know, I can't, I can't wear the same thing, and it seems, it just seems like it would clarify a lot of things, and make the rule more approachable, clearer to the students, and easier to police, because there's, the question arises, is that your first layer or your second layer? And why can I wear brands for my second layer but not my first? It's, it's the question that us as student council have been approached with, and we're saying, that's just the rule, and we're just trying to get it clarified.
Mr. Catlett, would you like to comment on this? Can I put you in the high seat? What do you think?
Well, and I know it's hard to understand how much time we spend on this. If, if Mr. Frank came to school like that, he would not be allowed to wear that shirt without a CC sticker, if he was a student. And I can wear this, this solid shirt. So what we do is, we have kids that are hiding, you know, they're putting their book pack in, and teachers won't see that. So what, I think they, they came to me as, said, you know, it's already, a jacket with that on it would be legal, but a shirt, same shirt would not be legal. So, I mean, we spend a lot of time, and I know it's important to have a dress code, and, and we'll follow whatever the board decides, but it, it does take a lot of time to see. Some teachers, the situation you get into is, some really police it like they're supposed to, others don't. And the same student may get by until fourth block, and I'll see him in the hall and say, that shirt's out of dress code. And then we'll, then go, well, they'll have worn it all day, and other people have seen it. And then they may have gotten stopped by a teacher, and had to either correct it or get a, a sticker on it. So, you know, and I know it seems, seems like it's not a major deal, but we spend an awful lot of time, you know. And, and anytime they, you know, like you said, I mean, a lot of parents have already called them, a lot of students have called me about changing it, and I think the dress code's good. But, you know, it, it is worth taking a look at to see, you know, you know, what you think. When they came to me, I mean, I sat and listened and, and understand that it is, it would take care of a lot of, of issues that we have. But, you know, like you said, I mean, if somebody comes in there, they have a Dixie flag, or they have something that's just out of order, then we would address those situations as, because they'll try, you know.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, I, I'm stuck, but that's, I just think that Dixie Outfitters did better flag, right at the end with their, it says Dixie Outfitters.
But I mean, we've been gotten, now, where parents have called if it's got a piping around the collar, or if it's got a black collar, and the body is blue, then that shirt's two colors, so that's not allowed. You know, so I mean, it's really, you know, it takes an awful lot, but, but it's worth the time it takes. But those that wanna take advantage of it are gonna wear their shirts and cover them up anyway. You know, the, the thing I saw about them, I mean, they're great kids, and they're coming and saying, we wanna do the right thing. And we understand there's rules, but, you know, could we take a look and see if I'm just making it just like the, over the, you know, the pullovers are? I don't know if that's budgeted up any or, or helps you, but, but it, it is a big, every day, you can come up there and you can see somebody that sneaks by with a, with a polo shirt on, for example. You know, I saw, I had two today, that I saw at the end of the day, and I said, and I said, well, we want them all year. So they're not, they're not legal, you know, they're not, you can't wear them, so.
So if you say this would constantly make your own job easier?
It would, it would, I mean, it would make it consistent with the, because here what they do is they just wear whatever they want to, and they buy a pullover, find a pullover, like Mr. Pink said. And right now, half the students there, they'll wear a pullover that they don't have a belt on, or their shirt tails untucked, or they have a, a dress code that's out, a shirt that's out of dress code. So they'll find ways to kinda get by. And, I mean, we'll even have to come up sometime and, you know, say, you got your shirt tail tucked in, you have a belt on, but they'll wear them all year long, if it's 100 degrees or, or 20 degrees. And, you know, it's just, that's just what they do.
I, I wanna say one of the things, I am a proud component of the dress code, I'm one of the people that enforce it strictly, and for the most part, I'd say 95% of our kids wear the solid color, they keep their shirts tucked in, but the one thing that they do is they question the, the logo thing. And, and he made a great point about, you could have it with a, you know, that's the argument, they say, I could wear this exact thing as a pullover, but not, but I, I, I don't wanna sound like I, 'cause I love the dress code. I was for it when y'all made it. I think it's, I, I coached, I was talking this afternoon, kids don't sag in our school, and they tuck, they tuck their shirts in. But the one thing that we have that, that we have to address is just the same, it just, if they have the polo logo or American Eagle logo, that's all we have to deal with.
And I tell you the great thing about it, is they correct. You know, the ones that, the great, we had two district referrals this year. One of them's been a phone, and one of them's, or two have been actually a cell phone this school year. And you talk about blessing that, that's, that's, so we got great kids that are doing the right thing, doing what they're supposed to do. Anytime I ask one to change, even now, if they have a AE that stands for American Eagle, those are not legal. But the eagle, the American eagle that's flying is. So, you know, and I'm in there trying to figure out what's getting allowed and what hasn't been allowed, so I've walked them, and they're gonna play, you know, and saying, oh, I wore this for, you know, four years, four years. So, but, you know, there's just such a, if, I think that the thing I, I would say that they came to me with, and I had to sit and go, you know, you're right about that. If you're trying to change it totally now on jackets and the shirts, but it's already been done on the jackets, so, and they're doing it. I mean, they're, they're wearing, the ones that wanna break the rules, they're gonna wear what they want over that, underneath that shirt that's a pullover, that's a second layer.
I make a motion that we change it from here, and let y'all, you know, monitor it, and then if it don't work, we go back to dress code.
I'll second that.
Let, let me ask you something. You was talking about this Confederate flag, so that, so that would be legal?
No.
Why not?
Why not?
Yeah, why not?
Well, I mean, that's something we might have to, because.
Well, the only thing, if I may interrupt, the only thing that's in there is shall not be offensive. We're gonna have to put some more teeth with that.
Yeah.
With that explanation of what is offensive. That's what we'll have to have.
Yeah.
Now, in the past, we've talked about that it is a racial slur, I mean, that this.
Well, it still wouldn't be right, even, on this, right, other than.
Well, it would be, it would be a business card, it would be the same exact policy that you already have on the jacket. So see, some of those have Columbia.
You're right.
Or, or Nike.
Nike.
That would be, you know, if you.
I see.
But those are already allowed for the jacket.
Yeah.
It would be nothing any different than what's going on, what's going on on the jackets. It would just be.
Well, yes, the policy's still passive for the principal. The principal's called, but it was, I would say you need a little bit stronger foundation about what is considered offensive, with a little bit of language there to help make it look like it's not Mr. Catlett picking on Sarah's kid or picking on Norris's kid.
It's basically the same thing we've been doing. We, we, if we see, if we deem the, the fleeces and pullovers offensive, we make them take it off or change. So it's, it's the same thing we've been doing, just applying it to the, to the, the first layer. If we see somebody come in with an inappropriate or camouflage, we tell them take it off, put it in their locker, or we handle it disciplinary wise. If, we'd be the same way if they came in with a pullover on and, and we saw it, it's, it would be no change than what we're already doing.
Okay, we have a motion, second, can we go ahead and change the policy through this year?
This school year.
This school year, and then we can.
Then we'll address it at that point in time.
Mr. Catlett, that's how much it'll be like the first meeting of the next year. That's what, that's what you're saying?
Right.
First meeting of the following year?
Yes.
Would this be on agenda?
Yes. And then, if you've had issues, then we can address it, and strictly up to you guys to police it and.
And if you have issues, we'll hear about them.
Unfortunately.
I mean, I, I think, and I'm not, you know, trying to profit, they're profit, but if, I think it would be a good change for the community, because they have these shirts already. You know, it's not, you know, like she mentioned, you know, you want now, go in your closet, as long as it's solid, it's a solid shirt, and it has a little, you know, a little horse or a little whatever on it, you know, and it's, it's small enough to fit the rules of that, and the public should be.
Okay.
You know, something that we, that I've seen in the past too with this, is, you know, is you try to do it where you can't show a difference in the economic of the families. But let me tell you what you'll see up there, is you'll see kids who have a tough time, there's a brown, they hadn't been washed, you know, so, so they still draw attention. And so we even give those shirts to them, you know, we notice that somebody's, 'cause you can still see kids that have a tough time home with, with the finances, even with the dress code, you know. So, but we will certainly make sure we keep an eye on it, let you know what's, what happens.
All right, you have a question. All right, I would take the first vote, say aye.
Aye.
Don't know, okay, motion carries. Ladies, y'all did a good job. Wes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the next thing will be the 2014 county school results, and Troy, come tell us on that.
Okay, gentlemen, if you look in your, your orange folder, Mr. Fenimore has provided a slide presentation that is actually posted on the school district website. It's about 35 slides, and I'm gonna hold that reserved, if that's okay with you guys. It's a little long, and I didn't know how long this delegation would be, but here's, you receive some information with your, in your agenda. I just wanna go over that with, with those here in attendance. And I know that Ms. Dunbar here has already interviewed me regarding school data, but data is all current, and it's all open to the public now. And as a school data district, we met the majority of our, what they call the AMOs, our annual measurable objectives. The thing about Tennessee is we are a, a state that really monitors student performance, and as, as a state and the nation, probably lead the pack as far as the amount of use that we get out of the student data that affects teacher performance, and in our case, even more specifically, incentive pay. So, you know, there's several states right now that are in a lot of deliberation, trying to find out how much is gonna be acceptable. And at the national level, they're talking about even delaying what we're already doing and been doing for several years. Again, in Chester County, as it says there in the bottom of page two on your agenda, Chester County School District is considered the status of achieved, not exemplary. Now, exemplary status is a great status to have, and that's what we're aspiring to be. But to be an achieved district means you have met, again, the majority of your AMOs, our annual measurable objectives. However, part of the reason why we did not get exemplary is because we had a majority of gap closures not met. And they'll give you, again, you have two mechanisms with your accountability. One is achieving a certain amount of percentage for your students who score proficient or advanced on their test. That's one measure, and we met the majority of those goals. Where we didn't meet the majority of the goals were with, where you talked about subgroups in comparison, such as your economically disadvantaged students versus your non-economically disadvantaged, your special ed students versus your non-special ed students, your subgroups for ethnicity, ethnicity as compared to all students. So in those, those gaps that occur between their achievement level in those subgroups compared to the opposite, we have not closed those gaps, which, and I'm gonna share with you some things here that make it difficult to do, but it's still, there's schools out there in the, in the state are doing it, and we're gonna learn. but it's still, there are schools out there in the, in the state are doing it, and we're gonna learn how they're doing it and use it. As you see in ours at the top of the second page, the reason for our need for improvement in those gaps are with our Hispanics and our economically disadvantaged students. Now, the thing about it is, is we're having some growth out of both, but the growth is not diminishing as far as the, all students as compared to the Hispanics or the non-economically disadvantaged versus those who are economically disadvantaged. The, and I also want to mention, and I want you to look, there's, you see these colored pages that you have here, and I, we have shared this with all of our administrators at their schools, and we use this data to help facilitate their school goals when you look at what are the root causes for our successes and what's the root causes for our challenges. It helps build each school level goals to approach for this year, plus the, again, the state has already given us suggestions from their perspective of what our annual measurable objectives should be. But what I'm gonna ask you to do, if you look at the top, I want you to find the one that says achievement growth matrix for CCMS. And I want to use this example, and I will share this with you, Mary, because here's something that, if, if we were to be true to the, to what's going on here, our middle school is an exceptional school. Let me help you understand this graph. The left-hand side of that column represents achievement, and these are comparisons to those in the state. The higher you go up, the better achievement that we have. As you go right along that same axis, that represents the amount of growth that happens. What we're saying about growth is that if we have students on the average who are projected to be here, but we get them here, then you're moving on the high end of that chart, which, again, if you notice in our middle school setting, and the what's blue is the most current year. The blue, you see that we have fourth grade reading language arts, fourth grade math, fourth grade science, fourth grade social studies, fifth grade math, fifth grade science, are at the best for achievement and the best for growth in comparison to the state. That's a, that is an accommodation. The black part represents a three-year trend. So you can see that the three-year trend has also been that the fourth grade reading language arts, fourth grade math, fourth grade science, fourth grade social studies has been in that highest mark for three years. The reason why I say that it brag on them is because that our middle school has been identified in a negative way as a focus school. What that means is that they have, as it shares here, they have a gap in their students with disabilities, an achievement gap between the students with disabilities as compared to the students without. Simply put, in my view, when I look at that information and compare it to the graph that I just pointed out to you, we're making such great gains with all of our students that we're struggling right now because those gains are too great, and our special ed students are not progressing at that same path. So the gap is ever-increasing. It's a difficult thing to do when you've already got a school district, or you got a school specific who know how to do this work. I've had several different people, including the Southwest Core Director, who says they are respecting us, and they want to watch and pay attention to what our teachers are doing at that school because they're very effective. But right now, as a negative connotation to our district, we have just the middle school as considered a focus school. Now, that just means that they're in the lower five percent in the state because of that lack of achievement for those students without or with disabilities. And it's, it is, it is a negative thing, but it's a thing that we're gonna work through. We're gonna still know that there are areas of success, and I, again, I point out that we have a lot of areas of success. Anywhere that you see in these graphs, if you want to spend time looking, anything that's up here in the white section is considered accommodating work. Again, this means how high they're going up in achievement, and across the graph means how much growth they're getting out of those students. And you can see that, as far as the middle school goes in comparison to other five schools, we would all want to be there. So I just want to make sure that we identify that. As it says there of the, and there were one hundred and forty-six schools identified in the state that fell in that same category that our middle school is, as a focus school. Sixty of that hundred and forty-six were identified the same way as ours. So it's not just a Chester County issue. This is a statewide issue where we are yet to really meet the needs of our special ed students to get them to achieve at that same level as our general population.
Do you think they ever will, I mean, really?
Well, we can do things better. We know that.
I mean, yeah, we can always.
Will, will they achieve as much or more? No.
That's.
I mean, I don't say that discour, because I, I mean.
I'm not either, but I mean.
Because all students can learn.
Yeah.
The thing that we've got, and, and I would say this year, unlike the years previous, we are working with a program that the state is mandating called RTI. It's called Response to Intervention Squares. Response to Intervention and Instruction, where we need to identify students when we find that skill deficit that they, they have, whether it's a deficit in math or reading, math or language, where maybe they don't read well because of phonemic awareness. Maybe it's their phonics. Maybe it's just word comprehension. And we meet those students' needs exactly where their skill requires. Just like when we go to the doctor, we don't just take any medicine. We take the medicine that makes us feel better with what we have. That work should improve our work that we're doing, not only with our students with disabilities, but those students that don't get identified with those extra services, but still are struggling in school. And get that addressed as early as possible, which we're doing this in all grades. Right now, the lower grades up through grade five have to do it this year. The goal is, is we're gonna be identifying those skill deficits and get them where they need to be so that by the time they get to the junior and high school, the potential for dropouts, the potential for discipline problems won't be as great, because students have found some success, because those needs have been identified early, and the interventions have been there to meet it. I'm very proud of the work that we've done. I'm proud of the people that we've got in these different roles. We've already had a couple of meetings with the administrators and supervisors. Our last one was doing some of this work here, and I had provided all the principals the last three this morning or this afternoon with this data for them to go back to their, their schools and to, again, as, as a team, look at this, collaborate around what you think the root cause for the success and the root cause for those challenges, and to begin to build your school improvement plan around that so that you can focus on a few goals that we're gonna improve on. And as we just concentrate on a few things that we need to do really well, then we're gonna see some, some good growth in our district.
Is our schools, it's doing well with the special needs children?
The great thing about the data is it's all out there, and we can use that same data to do the very thing. In fact, part of the, for me to, to create that, that graph, all the text is in the black. You have, it's comparison lists, where you can compare school to school, and we're using it for that purpose. So, yes, there are schools that are doing things well that are not having those gap and those lack of achievements for those populations. But really what it gets down to is what I know Mr. Cavett and the other principals are now concentrating on. We're not just doing things in general terms. We're not just teaching the masses. It's student for student, skill for skill. If we focus on student for student, skill for skill, where if you've got a certain number of students that have to be achieving, have to be achieving at that time in April, then we can say, if it's, if you gotta have seventy-five percent and you got ten kids in there, that means eight of them's gotta be doing it right. So Mr. Cavett's gonna tell his teachers which eight are, are on track, and what we gonna do for those other two that are not. So that's, that's the type of conversation and accountability that's happening at the schools. And, and we are, as a district, with supervisors and myself, want to provide those resources necessary to help them get there. It's not just their job. It's all of our jobs. I can show you a PowerPoint.
It's all right.
Give us a little final look over. We got a question.
Well, again, and as I shared, Rangle did put it on the, on the school website, because of this general population.
Did I hear you say that test scores are gonna be, are public knowledge now?
No, no, no. No, the results of the test scores. And it's not, it's, it's in, it's in district level and school level.
Okay.
You won't learn like what my students have done, and you won't learn what my students' teachers have done. It didn't get into that much of the weeds. We do, and that's where we are very purposeful on, which teacher teaches what classes? How many students do they have? Which population of students do they have? I mean, that's a strategic planning that you use that data to help guide, because, again, you know, you want to have your, your best people working with those harder-to-reach kids. You want to have your most accomplished teachers. Fortunately, now with the tip money, we can recruit those teachers to consider that, because it is more work to be in an accountability class. You put more hours in. You're more attentive to how many students are participating in class, where they are right now, and how am I gonna get them where they need to be. It's a challenging job. And, you know, they, and fortunately for us, we've got a bunch of teachers who do it and not for the money. They do it because it's the right thing to do, and it is. But fortunately for us, we're able to compensate for that, too.
You have a discussion on that? All right, the next thing, we just, we just, we just need some changes in our policy management. Go ahead, I'll let you go with those. You'll brief us a little, please.
And the key word is brief. As Ms. Sherry told Sarah, I'm just gonna leave that for Troy to do, because she got that lengthy man.
Yeah.
It was a lengthy list. There was only two last year that you had at this time, and I've got eight or ten. But as you, as you read through these again, and I'm not gonna read it for you, but the key thing is for that first one, Policy 1.803, where you need to add the smokeless tobacco vapors because people are, the popularity of the electronic cigarettes, to make sure that's included. And again, in some of these cases, gentlemen, the policy, our policy, and I, I include that in the, in your information, and it does, the policy seems to satisfy, in my opinion, of the guideline that they're recommending. But Policy 4400, have the right to inspect all tests that are developed. That's a new, they've been able to inspect the curriculum and the materials like the textbooks that are used, but I've never seen the language to include the tests, which, we should be transparent with that. We want to, and I'll say this, our tests must be aligned to what they're gonna be accountable for. I mean, it is silly to think that we are testing our kids, teaching our kids content that they will not be assessed by. I mean, and it's not teaching to the test, but it's teaching to the content that we know that we are measured by to be successful or not successful. The textbook list will be, and it's already been posted on the district website. So is the testing schedule that's been posted. That's Policy 4700. Those things have already been done. Notice that Policy 4.802, we don't know exactly where this will go, must allow student speakers publicly state or express religious viewpoints without fair discrimination retaliation. That doesn't happen in Chester County. But again, we don't know what, what scope that's gonna be. That's the recommendation from the state or from the T S B A. Policy 5.200 and 201, and we're already, I mean, we're already required to abide by that new law. So our policy should reflect that, that there is at most a ninety-day duration for anybody that's suspended without paid, except that it's for the investigation of something, of criminal action or something through D C S. And as I said, Policy 6.200, again, that due process afforded to students who have excessive unexcused absence, I feel like that our current policy is already addressing that. Second page, Policy 6.312, the use of that, the prohibited use of personal technology, now because, you know, and you look at our policy, it still includes the term patron. I hadn't seen a patron fifteen years.
Been a while.
So, you know, I don't know if it'll take a recurrence now that we consider dropping it, but, you know, you've got things, as it describes there, Google glasses, watches that are internet savvy, and we do have, you know, Wi-Fi that is available for our students, because all of the testing is becoming electronically driven. We're, we're having to go online for our testing computer, so that's why our schools have been, technology's been lifted to that level. And I would say that our teachers, growing population started last year, where certain teachers, under the strict guidelines of putting your device on the table, students were allowed in some classes because of the principal's recommendation to allow them to use it for research or for support and intervention or to offer feedback to the teachers. For, instead of trying to provide each one a computer, they have the computer in their back pod, or their iPhone, or their Samsung or whatever. So it was, it was giving us the opportunity to use it for instructional purposes now. Again, we had some students who thought that they were using for instructional purposes. They were texting their friend, and they got their phones confiscated because of it. So, and we did not have a mainstream where every teacher did that because some teachers, in last year's experience, didn't want to have that responsibility. They just wanted to stay where the rule was. We're not supposed to have it on. But again, that's just changing some of the term, terminology in there and the technology to match what's current. Again, Policy 6.317, and again, I've read that policy a few times over. I don't see much difference than what we have other than as it says there, should provide a written notice to the parents or guardians of the student if they have any reason to appeal the decision. Again, the majority of the decisions we have for alternative school, where, again, D H A is disciplinary hearing authority. That applies when we have students that go to alternative school. The majority of those students who get referred to alternative school go with a given. It's either possession of drugs. We've never had a weapon brought to school in the sense of a gun, where students have been required to, well, required to go to alternative school for that. And we've not had battery to a teacher at the high school. But in those cases, there is no appeal process. It's a given. It's a state requirement. They are zero tolerance. But this just provides guidance about what the D H A would be responsible for, to provide written notice if they did it. 6.4001, again, is, and surveys are going left and right all the time, and this is any outside group requiring surveys, it will have to have prior, or prior consent from the student or parent, especially, again, in our case, most of our students are unemancipated. And then the final one, and we do this already, 6.60, that when students transfer from school to school, then we not only send academic records but disciplinary records. Usually comes in the, in the guidance of we have the withdrawal form, and we have the request for records that specifies what we're asking for. We just always made a habit to ask him for those things, especially for attendance, because if you get somebody coming late in the year or at a odd time, it may be that they're trying to avoid some type of truancy issue in previous school districts, or some type of discipline issue. So that's pretty much it, Mr. Bob.
All right, you guys, I can motion approve changes to the policies. I second. All right, we have a motion, a second to approve changes of policy. You made a discussion.
Colin, do we need to put some more signs around the space of football field at the back for free? Just because jamboree is some of Riverside smoking standing out there on the sideline. I don't know if you, I think Paul and I talked about this earlier. I mean, they were literally standing on the sidelines smoking. Me Charles, somebody smoking, and I'm getting off someone's seat, smoking, right?
Yeah, that's no problem. We can have that done.
I mean, the back for free, not just.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Those, okay, the changes are approved. The next thing will be the proposed meeting dates for 2014, 2015. Schedule up for next year.
Okay. Gentlemen, sorry for the Friday meeting.
Yeah, I saw that.
I guess that was gonna be with me carrying you out to eat or something.
That's what we're, we're looking at.
That's what I figured.
If the newspaper gets to go through the ground.
Right. Well, of course, they've got a videotape us eating. But with Bob and I talking about potential date, how would, since the thirteenth is, what I expected to put there was the thirteenth, but that's the he-haw show.
Would we all be waiting to see?
I think that date's been set, but I mean, I can, we can set attentively for the twentieth, for the, just the next Thursday. I mean, that'd be, I mean, just to have a date there that we can say.
Yeah, the twentieth.
Is that, I mean, and like Bob said earlier, if there's anybody that has a conflict, we can adjust that, but. So the second date will be November the twentieth instead of November the fourteenth, 2014. And I tried to match for the rest of them as close as we could in last year's schedule, so hopefully accommodates your trap. And I tried to match for the rest of them as close as we could in last year's schedule, so hopefully accommodate your travel.
Alright, guys, I'm just, as we've done in the past, we set these dates. If anybody's got a conflict or a problem, you know, if you guys email me, I'll send out an email to everybody else. Can we move it back? You know, maybe Monday or maybe the next week, we try to work and all kind of, and we can all be at the meetings if at all possible. Make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve. Sir.
We approve the meetings. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proves no, and we'll approve those dates. Thank you. Alright, next thing is just some updates. And Troy, I'm going to kind of let you go with those if you will.
Well, and the first one, I appreciate Mr. Glenn. He had joined us today. The, we had our final inspection today for the sports play. And, and Mr. Glenn, if you want to speak of it at any point, please do. There are some things still yet to be done, and I say that to say Shane Harwell is, is taking, he and Brian Crocker, Phil's pronounced his last name, Crocker, Crocker or Crocker? There are still, again, when they hydroseeded the grass, not where it's sowed, well, sodded. You know, the sod was an issue because where they were supposed to have sodded the grass, they cut off short the banned field section. Shane Harwell and Brian, well, really Shane, came back out of their own expense. They didn't fortunately charge us again. But they went ahead and squared off that area that was supposed to be sodded to begin with. And actually, we benefited from that because we actually had more sod put down where it would help slow down the water, washing on the front end. But on the back end, the day that they did the hydroseeding was a Thursday, got done about lunch, and that's when like a three to four inch rain fell that afternoon or that evening. So, there are sections where it's not as strong. There are some sprigs of grass coming out that's very light compared to the other places. But Shane also said that this week, probably tomorrow, didn't he, Mr. Glenn, put down triple? He's going to broadcast triple 15 to get a little spark and then see if that will provide enough support to get that grass moving and growing. If it doesn't though, they, they have agreed to, to come back and put down or sow it in winter rye to give it some stability through the winter because it is, it was too late to really sow it again with Bermuda. But with, with that triple 15, potential rain this weekend, I think 8% chance earlier today is what I saw. That should, and with 90 degree weather, that should give that Bermuda that's already got a somewhat of a stand, doing pretty well.
It's going to go with that.
The walkway around the backside, the southeast part of it is still got a lot of cleaning, a lot of problems there. And part of those problems are just because you've got drainage on the above it, and it's a lot higher than where it is for the walkway. The walkway is built at ground level. What Shane is, and Mr. Glenn, you can probably say this better than me, they're going to grade off a little bit along the edge of that walkway, clean it off, grade off a little bit, and then what, what kind of, not wheat straw, but what?
Some kind of rolled mat.
Yeah.
Put them down, stake them down where they'll catch all that sediment coming down. It won't be as, he talked about putting wheat straw.
Now, it'd be gone.
Now, it'd be there for a while if it's staked down, but those stuff I think will work better. It'll rot down.
Yeah, the state uses that one.
Yeah.
But the condition, the bathrooms are all good shape. I inspected those that morning before they came home. The areas that were concerned were just some little bit of maintenance things and repairs as far as the door hinge in the boys bathroom getting clogged before it was too tight. They've adjusted that. I checked all that. Everything looks good there. They still have to do some washing around where that new drainage has been put in, and they're committed to do that.
Get everything cleaned up around the new addition that did it east. I'm sure you said at one time that there's cleanup that needs to be done around there.
I bet they did that earlier.
I'd have to go check again. I know what you're talking about, the backside where it's- But I can say, I would say this, Shane Harwell is, is a man who will stand on his word. He said, "If you need me," Brian said, "you got my cell phone number too. If you find anything," is what they told me today, "that needs to be done, we'll correct it." So, and of course Shane's wife works for the school system, so I mean, they're local people. They want to see things done right. And Shane has said that to me more than once. He came earlier this week to say, "Is there anything more we need to do?" Actually, there was an asphalt pile in the tree and it's in that area that I asked him. I said, "If you remove that, leave the rock because we can use that rock," and he did. He had it done the next day. So, I trust his, I trust what he told me that he'd be willing to make sure it's going to be in good shape. And if we find something else, he'll help make it right.
The, the walking track, the southeast corner, when are we talking about maybe getting that finished or?
Well, that's what we're talking about.
I know, but we, we are-
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Or is he, is he going to do some, some grading?
He's going to have to.
He's just going to cut back about two feet.
Two feet.
Okay. And then put these roads around 140, 50 feet.
Yes, sir. He's going to turn that corner back up toward the light pole.
Yeah, where it catches water to cut off that road.
What that, the water's coming out of that drain. The drain's on the wrong side of the walking track. The drain's on the high end of the walking track. And what he said is, once that water comes flowing there, it just turns on that walking track and goes back toward that corner of the property. So, that, that's, that's going to be an issue. It's always going to be an issue. And they've got some seal barrier on the backside to remove too and clean that up. Okay, the, moving on with the, of course, we were at the Goodwin property. Now, how much we want to talk about that. But again, just, just reminder that Rachel Brees, the one who's currently using the other building for her discovery learning, she's eager to get in the house, and she will definitely appreciate any speed that we have in getting ready to rent for her. She told me there's several programs that she has that she would like to include in her curriculum, but they just can't do it because of the space that they have currently in that one. Third part, just again, as you, as you have read, we have a higher enrollment. District-wide, our enrollment has increased by 20% from last school year. It is a difference of, overall, a difference of 554 students from this time last year. So...
Can you attribute that to anything or?
Well, we just got a really good school system.
Yeah, I know that.
I mean, that-
But I haven't sold that many more hours.
And, and, and again, I know this has not happened in every case. I can't say this is always the situation, but we do have people planning on campus tuition.
Yeah, I know. We've had a lot of them.
Or it could be a lot more.
Yeah, it could be, but we don't.
But you know-
We do a good thing.
Jack's Creek is, is, is a school that's a little bit smaller than the, than the others as far as their population is not increasing like the others. But the high school, 871, is, is about 70 more students than we had at the end of the school year last year. Of course, we graduated a small graduating class. It was only 179. And this year, as you can see, the numbers are quite a bit bigger. Junior high's got a good load of students. But you see that fourth grade is a smaller class as compared, the majority were in that range between 220 to 230 or 240. So, when you put four of those 230s and 240s together in a high school, you're going to be close to 1,000 kids. And it's supposed to handle that.
Yeah.
I know that'd be an harsh question.
It's supposed to handle that. Let me put something apart in line.
I mean, I can stop at any time to tell you what questions.
I was going to say, y'all riddled with these other things. Any questions or discuss any of them?
No, but it's pretty much explained.
What do y'all think about the Goodwin property? What do y'all think we need to look at and doing over that?
Do the roof, paint the outside. And-
Ceilings?
Do, paint the ceilings inside and paint that one like it's what the living room, you know, repair that wall underneath.
And the back steps.
And the back steps definitely got to be redone. Of course, we're going to take the fence down. I don't know if that needs to be included down like that third building.
We're going to do that without having to pay for somebody to do that.
And push the old building out there and burn it.
That one right behind the next.
But I think that's what y'all need to do as far as the floor and that, you know. Oh, we got a commode.
Well, and there's, and the sink in the living, I mean, in the kitchen. Because that, around the drain you can see it's all bad shape there. With that one commode in the, in the, the first, first part of the house.
And we can do that, and we can check it again.
It ain't no cost.
Y'all got down what we need to do on that? Okay, Troy, I guess just see if you can start with that. So, just touch.
Okay. Are, are you all okay with Lonny's work, Lonny God's work?
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
He's the only one that's giving me, I had another name, but I called twice and I never could get an answer. Of course, he's probably, he's not, he's probably working it. I don't understand why he's working for me and I don't-
He's respecting it.
It starts at four. It starts at four, and it's, it's from here, it's over an hour to get there. So, and I'm, I'm, I'm willing to drive. I'm not saying you have to go with me, but I'm, I've got a van that can carry everybody and go once you get there.
Don't have a problem with it. Like I say, if I run it late, I'll call because I might have-
Now, we don't have to necessarily leave from the board office. You can leave right from the road stop or somewhere right there closer to the highway. Just whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to leave my vehicle there.
Okay, no problem.
Anything else for here?
Rick, good to have you on board.
So nice to be here. I'm going to thank you every time I see you.
Well, that's a good signal.
Well, I was going to say, yeah, Shane, we'll, have you staying up here with us?
Man gets horny in March, not in April.
He'll be officially there.
Officially, officially.
Officially, yeah.
We're getting on this one.
You going to be there?
Yeah, I'm going to be horny.
Why?
Yeah.
What, what color?
Purple.
Make a motion with John.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Give a please.